Well, maybe it is on this one. That's the one I think, yeah. Okay.
I will call the October 4th, 2017 Amory City Council to order. Fran, would you take the roll call, please?
Certainly. Raymond Schneider.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Sicker.
Yes.
I'm going to ask Chief Tom Marson to lead us in the pledge. But before he does, I would like us all to take just a moment to think about Las Vegas and all the hurricane victims. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In your packets, you have the minutes from the September 6th and September 23rd council meeting.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Second. Motion made in the second to approve the minutes from September 6th, September 23rd. Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Upcoming events, I think we only have one. Ruth, move her over.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Amory Women's Club Annual Fall Fundraiser. This year, proceeds will be donated to the Amory schools. We know that many times, teachers spend their own money to meet the needs of their classroom, so this money will go into an existing school innovative mini grant fund. Any teacher who has an idea for their classroom that needs financial support can apply for these funds. In the past years, we've donated money to the Amory Food Pantry, the Salvation Army, the Northwood Homeless Shelter, and last year, the Angel Funds at the elementary and intermediate schools. Our theme this year is a Harvest Moon Hoot Nanny. The event takes place at the Amory Golf Course on Friday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There will be beer and wine tasting, great food, music, and a silent auction. The tickets are $30, in advance at $35 at the door. You can purchase tickets at Chat Johnson's or at the Community Education Center office at the high school, and 50% of the ticket price is tax deductible. So I know you will have a hoot of a good time, so dust off your boots and support this very worthy event. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Ruth. Officers' reports. Library Director, James Nealon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just have a couple of events coming up at the library this Friday, October 6th, at 1:30. We have the Reptile and Amphibian Discovery Zoo. And then on Saturday, the 7th of October, at 10:30, we have Lorna Landvik, who I think I mentioned last time. She's an author out of the Twin Cities, kind of a comedian, too. And so she'll have books to sign and things like that at the library that's on Saturday. And then further in the month, October 21st, which is a Saturday, at 10:00, we have the Halloween Storytime and Parade, so kids can dress up in their costumes and parade through the library. It's very exciting.
All of us?
Haven't seen any adults do it, but they could, I suppose.
Thank you. The city council, then?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Dale Kahler.
It's almost like one of those obstacle courses we do with our masks on.
I see that.
Thank you for having me this evening. My report is pretty short, direct. I just wanted to highlight a few things on the written report that's available on the table over there. Our runs are running about where we were last year. I think we're four more runs this year than last year at this time. So that's pretty consistent. Again, over half of these runs are EMS calls, so the fire and EMS is kind of balancing. The DNR grant that I wrote for came back Monday. We wrote for a $10,000 grant for some funds for a wildland vehicle. That has not been approved. Instead, the supplemental grant that I wrote has been approved, so we got a grant for about $3,080. And that's the 50% match grant through the DNR for wildland equipment. So it'll be used basically in our grant and will be for a couple of portable radios for wildland fires. The window for the federal grant has not opened yet. I'm still waiting for that to open up. That's the FEMA, the old FEMA grants. So we're going to try to write our gear and stuff into that grant. The fire department's been busy with a few activities. I want to thank Tom Benson and the school for sponsoring the 9/11 presentation that we participated in this year. Wandrus Fire Department, Garfield, Deer Park, Apple River joined us, so that was a pretty good event. Appreciate all their help in running it. The fire department's Fire Prevention Day will be on October 16th, which is actually the Monday after Prevention Week, but that's how it worked out in our schedule. So we'd like to invite everybody down to the firehouse, especially the younger students from school and stuff. So we're going to run it from 4:00 to 7:00 on Monday, the 16th. Free food, live demonstrations. We've got some demonstrations that the kids can participate in, and we have some demonstrations by the firefighters for fire prevention. We'll also be giving out the rest of the free smoke detectors, fire alarms, that night until they're gone. We approximately have about 180 of them. The committee has been working hard on our specifications for a wildland vehicle to replace our older '92 Chevy pickup. And the specs are coming through a little bit more in a multi-use vehicle, so that we can do a little bit more with fewer vehicles. And that committee has a PowerPoint and stuff that we will share with the finance committee starting next week. That's all I have, except calendars came in today. So as I get phone calls about our calendar, there are people that like them very much. They have been shipped today, and we got them just earlier today. So our new calendars are out. A lot of nice, really nice coupons on the back this year. We encourage people to use those as well. And they're available, you'll see an ad in the paper this week for fire prevention. It'll tell you where you can pick up your very own calendar. Right now, I have one for all the council members, so.
Thank you.
And I kept a box in back, so everybody's welcome to take one on your way out.
Public Works, Chance Green.
Bones had to run away on business, so I'm the filling guy tonight. Just to let everybody be aware, guys have been out turning valves lately, so be aware, they're out in the middle of the streets. And next week, we start hydrants, so if you have discolored water, run your tap till it clears out. Also, be aware of Dwayne. He'll be out there turning hydrants, so look out for him. With that being said, county boys are also doing patching on Highway 46. Be aware of them, as well as the fiber optic. Chater and Heistrom along Harriman tonight. They have central here bridged right now with fiber optic, but those guys are working. Like I said, we'll be flushing hydrants next week, and we're doing street sweeping as well, so fall leaves are on the ground, so we're cleaning them up. And the dump is still open from on the first and third Saturdays, 9:00 to noon, weather permitting. So we're hoping to go, we're hoping to have a nice late fall and keep it open as late as we can, so. But if you do need to get out during the week, let me know, and we can accommodate most people, so. Any questions?
Go ahead. I have a question.
Yep.
Gloria, last of the Amory Women's Club. I just wanted to know why there were no recycling bins at the Fall Festival?
I guess I was not aware of that.
None, absolutely none.
I'm not aware, I wasn't aware of that. We usually strap them to the back of the garbage cans, and I guess we might have overlooked that. We did have them at the beer tent here.
Yeah, there were, there was these huge things from Waterman's. I had people tell me they carried their recycling home.
Oh, that was good.
Because they didn't want to throw them in the trash.
Gotcha.
Okay? Besides the recycling bins that you have in the garage that you didn't use, Polk County also offers free recycling bins that you can use at no charge. You just have to pick them up and take it back.
That's good to know.
So this is just a little bit, you know, disheartening here in an age when they've cut, they don't want us to recycle plastic, they don't want us to do this, they don't want us to do that, and then here we are, no recycle bins.
Well, and like I say, I apologize, I might have overlooked that fact, because we usually strap them to the garbage cans in the food court. And like I say, we did have recycling bins in the beer tent, but like I said.
But you had most of the plastic out in the food cart.
Right, and like I said, I might have overlooked the fact, and that might not have got it all. I apologize.
Yeah, and another thing I just wanted to tell you, I was at Spooner at a meeting, and Spooner has a trash hauler that says, you put your trash in the trash bin, and they're small ones, and everything else is recycled. 1 through 10 plastics, styrofoam, cardboard, paper, anything you could possibly think of, you throw it in the trash, the recycle bin, it's all recycled. And I think Amory needs to look into something like this to help our environment here in Amory. We're the city of lakes, you know? So I, that's just a suggestion.
No, I can definitely do that.
All right. Another thing, ice fishing coming up. I would hope we're still going to have recycling bins at North Twin and also at behind the radio station for the people coming off the lake. Is there other cans, plastic bottles, and whatever, whatever else you have?
Tell them it's good.
Okay?
Yep, we can do that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Please, Chief Tom Marson.
I bring you sunshine today.
Thank you.
Good evening. I presented to the council the media favor reports for the month of December. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We had another successful Fall Festival with little problems to report. The weather was fairly good there, and once again, I want to thank Public Works, Chance Davis, Bones's crew there for the hard work that they do. They're up all hours of the night and things like that. The Sunday of Fall Festival concluded our K-9 raffle, which most of you probably know about, withdrawing for several prizes that were done on Facebook there. After all the expenses, we brought in just a little over $11,000 for our K-9 fund there, and a big thanks to all the people that purchased tickets and some of the local businesses that helped participate as well. Earlier today, we had our second annual Coffee with a Cop event at Amory Chevrolet. I want to thank for all those who stopped in, and a special thanks to the staff at Amory Chevrolet that seem to do a lot to promote and participate in our local events there, so. And in a month, today, I'll be at this meeting here announcing that winter parking will be taking effect there, so. That's all I've got.
On that note.
On that note. Run away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Acting City Administrator, Fran Duncanson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and public. The first thing I want to do tonight is I want to thank the city council for the consideration afforded to our department heads and our city employees in the hiring process of the city administrator by including an employee panel for our department heads and employees. I think that was a valuable experience, and thank you for showing that respect and consideration to your staff. I've been meeting with the budget heads regarding their upcoming budget requests for next year, both operation and maintenance, and their capital items. We have on our agenda to schedule our first budget work session meeting next week. Also, I just want to comment, we are just getting the audit wrapped up yet. We got some things late again this year, so we're working and scrambling to get all of that wrapped up. In addition, you'll see in the checks tonight, there's a check to a law firm that works on behalf of Cardinal Glass for the amount of $22,287.46. That is a result of Cardinal Glass appealing their manufacturing assessment to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue and a determination that was made upon the appeal of Department of Revenue turning them down the first time. This was a settlement Department of Revenue negotiated. It represents the years 2014, 15, and 16, averaging about $7,000 a year for those years. I've completed and filed the reports and the work with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue for the city to charge back to the individual taxing jurisdictions their portion of the refund we were required to issue. That will be the Amory School District, the Wisconsin Indian Head Technical District, Polk County, Lakes and River District, and everybody but the state. I get to charge that back, too. I don't get to. Unfortunately, they just keep their portion of that. So that would.
The $22,000 goes to the attorney, and then the attorney gets it to Cardinal?
Yes. It goes to a trust account. And actually, I was very pleased to see that that was the way it was done, because when this happened in 2015 on the initial determination, and we sent a check at that time to Cardinal Glass in the, close to about $30,000, actually, they didn't have a record of that, and they were claiming that we still owed them that from back a couple of years ago. And Bremer Bank was great to work with to go back in their archives and produce a copy of the canceled check. And so then, upon further discussion, it was decided the best way to handle this is to have it go through the attorney rather than directly to Cardinal, so. With that, that's my report I have for tonight. There's any questions from anyone? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Fran. Management Analyst, David.
Okay, continuing with walkability. The Public Works Committee was going to meet on September 26th to discuss walkability alternatives as it relates to sidewalks here in Amory. Unfortunately, we were not able to get a quorum for that meeting, so that discussion is going to be moved to the finance committee as we're now in budget season, so we can try to see if there's anything the city decides to do. We can still make sure we get funds in next year's budget if they decide to do that. A couple zoning items that are going on right now. We have received a request from Justin Hosking of the Whispering Waters Development. He's requesting to rezone eight parcels within his development from R1, single-family, to R2, two-family residential. The planning commission has a tentative meeting date of Thursday, the 26th. Should the commission decide to recommend the rezoning of the property to the city council, a public hearing will be held regarding that matter at the November city council meeting on November 1st. Also, we have a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals that will be held on Wednesday, the 18th. The board will consider variances for signage, retaining wall related to a driveway project, and a deck. Notices for that meeting will be going in the paper and to the adjoining property owners next week.
What's the date of that zoning appeals?
Zoning Board of Appeals is Wednesday, the 18th.
Thank you.
At 9:00 AM. Any questions?
Where does the water recreation and housing study sit right now? What's going on with those?
Well, right now, at this point, it is just waiting on determination if, from either any committees or the city council, if they decide to move forward with that, if there's any discussions they want to have specifically for things looking at 18. We are going into budget season. Upcoming on the agenda are, we're going to be setting some meetings for the budget, so those can be chosen to be discussed by the council at that time if they choose.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Committee reports, finance.
Rick, do you want to do that one, seeing I wasn't there?
Okay.
I can read the notes, but I wasn't there.
Finance committee met September 26th. Rick Davis and myself were present, and we had several issues that we voted to extend a microloan payment to home health. We also talked about opening the negotiations between city and the WPPA. Then we went into closed session and came back out at 5:41 with a recommendation to the city council to extend utilities 300 feet on Center Street West as a TIF number six project for 2018. Basically, that services three lots on the west side and south of the memory care unit, which we have, which we have offers to purchase on. I think we'll be voting on at least one of those yet this evening. When the memory care unit was put in, there was a sewer stub that went under Harriman Avenue to, right out in front of City Hall, and it also went far enough into lot number one, so that it's readily available. But it did not connect with the main, which is coming, comes down the alley here. So part of, part of our TIF project will be to hook that part to the, to the city, to the sewer main, and then extend the sewer 300 feet to the west to make those lots actually as we build them as buildable lots, and so they have to have sewer in order to be a buildable lot. So we're going to do that, and that'll be part of the 2018 budget. Then we also talked about a land swap, a number, and that'll be, that's part of the, that's for a vote later on also. I'm not sure how many years ago, I think it was 18, he said, years ago, we had a person buy two lots on the golf course. And at the time, they were sold as buildable lots, and they were also sold, if anyone remembers that, to bail the golf course out of a fairly heavy financial obligation that they had at that time. So it turns out that after 18 years, the owner wants to build on those lots, and the cost to the city to build on those lots is really prohibitive, as would be the cost to the owner. He's offered to swap us two lots for one that we have that is buildable, and we are recommend, will be recommending to the council to approve that land swap with the caveat that we have a builder's agreement in place and a timeline to build on that lot before the lots are, you know, before the swap is made. So it's, it's kind of a, if we had to send, or if we had to put sewer and water down to those lots, the cost would be considerably more than what the value of the lots are. And I, it's 20 years ago, I don't know how that conversation went at that point in time, but now we're faced with dealing with how to, how to make, make it right and get a building on that lot and then start paying, so it starts paying taxes, so. That was all that we had for, oh, and then we also had a, an offer to purchase for lot number one, which is right across the street, and that'll be up for consideration later tonight also, my full counsel.
Thank you, Rick. Parks and Rec.
Yeah, continuing on. We also met on the 27th with folks representing the, the friends of the dog park, I guess, folks that are interested in having a dog park. If you've paid attention to council meetings the last two years, we've talked about it numbers of times to try and find a suitable place. We went, originally, we talked about a lot down at the corner of Minneapolis and Griffin. That went by the wayside. We talked about some land on the east side of the airport. That proved to be cost prohibitive to put a driveway and a, and parking lot and so on in that particular piece of ground. The airport commission met several times over this and finally talked about land on the west side of the airport. The issue with the land on the west side of the airport is that it's currently rented to the tune of $300 an acre, and that, the terms of, from the FAA and the Wisconsin Department of Airplane Arts is that we, if we do that, we have to, that's an income producer for the airport. And if we take that, would take that for some other reason, we really need to figure out a way to generate $1,500 to $1,800 in additional income. The dog park folks were not interested in assuming that, that obligation. And we also had the caveat that we were not able to guarantee that that space would be available for a dog park for a long period of time, i.e., if someone wanted to build a, build hangars over there, or basically any use that would involve the airport or involve flying would supersede that particular piece of ground. And also, you know, it was, we'd, we'd miss the revenue. So we looked around, there were some informal discussions between folks from the city and so on, and we have, at this point, recommended to the dog park folks that they accept the portion of, a portion of the lots at the corner of Minneapolis and Griffin. That's currently zoned commercial, been for sale for a number of years. The issues with the land as far as commercial property goes is that it's quite low. I don't know if there's ever standing water out there particularly, but, but it's always got wet feet. And so it appears that the, for the city to make a dog park out of it, and one that we can relatively control or say that, yeah, it could probably be a dog park for a long period of time, that was offered to the folks, and, and now they're, they're canvassing their constituency to see if they're, if they wanted to proceed with it. So that's kind of where we're, where we're at. There's not any action by the council necessary on that item. Star Seven Lakes Trail came to Parks and Rec. I'm going to try and encapsulize what they said rather quickly. The operation of the Star Seven Lakes has been a conglomeration or a treaty of sorts between friends of the Seven Lakes Trail and the DNR and Polk County. Polk County is not excited about still main Polk County is not excited about still maintaining it. All of the basic maintenance funding and everything else has come from friends of the, of the Seven Lakes Trail. So they came to us and asked if the city would want to partner with Seven Lakes and the DNR to provide management services for that trail. We agreed in principle that we want that to happen, and we would be the managing partner, although at least my expectation was that our involvement with, with, in doing anything would be minimal at best. The Seven Lakes folks have been doing a great job with maintaining it, and the DNR, in conjunction with the DNR, Bill Zager is here tonight, and Bill is actually president of the Wisconsin Association of Trails, is that?
State Park.
State Parks, okay. And so we're fortunate to have that input at that high a level on the trail, and we, as a Parks Committee, would recommend, will recommend to the council that we partnership with them to be one of the managing directors. I might add that that, all that said, the meeting is tonight at this exact same time at Balsam Lake to see if the county is actually, you know, if they're going to fish or cut bait. So they're either going to be on the, on the, the program here, or, you know, allow Amory to, as far as I understand. So we, we recommend that, and, and I guess that will be the action, the council needs to decide. All in, last but not least, we have one of the Amory residents that, for many years, has taken a real interest and a, and put not only just interest, but his back and his money and his time into making Amory a, a place that's pleasant to the eye, a beauty to the beholder, and he's getting old, to put it mildly. And we would like to recommend to the council that we recognize Ted Zinn for his contributions to making Amory a, a more pleasant and beautiful place for the many years that he's served without pay and with, basically without recognition. And Ted's responsible for many of the flowers around. He doesn't physically put the pots out anymore, but he started it. The flags, the flags along the lake, along North Twin Lake. Ted's idea for the Frisbee Park in, in North Park, and so he's been a valuable person for the city, and I believe Ms. Kay is going to have a proclamation that, that recognizes his contributions to the city.
Yep, that will come later.
And that's all.
Are you, really?
I'm done.
Okay. Public safety.
The public safety committee met last night on the third. This was in regards to two particular ordinances. If you remember, in your recent water bill, we have a lot of the ordinance highlighted in the city, and this came into two of them particular. One is under chapter seven dash one. This is regarding regulating the licensing and keeping of animals. And then the other one is chapter eleven dash six, which in our Amory code is, is what regulates our public nuisances. So how this basically came about, there's a property, Violet's Pet Grooming, that's owned and operated by Kelly Larson, where the property was located, a couple of the neighbors that owned property and that business, commercial area, had had some complaints regarding the dogs excessively barking outside, some concerns about the dogs possibly being aggressive, showing their teeth, bearing, being there at all hours of the day and night, and some issues with some of the, when it rains, the, there's no grass, so the feces from the dogs was running down the river, down towards the lake, the river and so forth. So with the meeting, what we did is we reviewed what has happened in animal complaints in history, and the, the owner there had been issued over the last period of time, this has been going on for about six, seven months or so, issued some, three types, three tickets, ninety-two fifty for these violations, that were issued with, with court date up and coming, October twenty-fifth. What we're doing is, we were just kind of discussing what other ordinance violations might be, how we can resolve it. Again, all these ordinances that we have in a city, we, we're looking for voluntary compliance from people. These are public safety, or they're quality of life issues. I mean, everybody wants to have a nice house and quiet, and, and so we're looking for what's the best way to try to resolve this for the businesses nearby, the houses nearby, and also the, the owner that has the pets. We're trying to come to some resolution. So we're basically have some options that the chief had written to the owner, making sure they know of the, the violations in tow, and see what we can do to resolve it. Because that's the, the pin, we want everybody to have good neighbors, whether they're commercial or homes, because this affects everybody. So that's why the same thing I just say in this, if you ever have a question, your police department, city hall, public works can help. And even if you have some of these things where you may have something junked, there's, and you can't move it, there might be ways our public works can help to get that items out, because we just want to keep it safe for everybody, clean, and for all along. So there's no, other than the chief is sending a letter to, to the owner on there, there's nothing that has to come across council.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Moving on to new business, item number six, scheduling finance committee two thousand and eighteen budget work sessions. Fran?
Since I had all of you together, I thought this would be a good time to schedule that. We would like to have a meeting next week, a preliminary meeting, based off from some of the work we've done. We're going to be looking for direction from the committee on certain budgetary items. Before we can get too far, we need to know if there's certain things you want to do or not do, or continue or discontinue. So that's what we're looking at for, for next week's meeting. The best date for me would be Tuesday. I don't know if that works for our committee members or not. Our chair is out of the country until the eighteenth, but we need to meet before then.
What's, what's the date on the, on that Tuesday?
The tenth. Tuesday would be the tenth.
Okay.
What time you looking at?
Five o'clock, would that work?
Six.
Six.
Six o'clock?
I'll second that.
And possibly I might have to be by phone, I may be up in Ashland, but I'll see.
Okay, well, we need committee members for Quorum though, so Chris and Rick.
That would be, like I say, have a possible, I might have to be in Ashland or Superior.
Okay.
But I would try to by phone.
I'd rather do it Wednesday personally, but that's...
We, and we can do a Wednesday if necessary.
Would that work?
Wednesday's better.
Does that work for you better, Chris?
I'm just not quite sure, but yeah, I can work something out.
In time?
I like five or six o'clock.
Five, six?
At least.
Five?
Um, we talked here a while ago briefly about not having a dog and pony show for that first meeting.
And we are not.
Good. Typically, we have ten entities come in with basically the same request for budgets that we've had for years, and we, and it's, you know, it's, they prepare for it, I know, but it, it ends up being a five-hour meeting for finance, and basically, unless there's something new that you have to present, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody on finance is going to, for instance, drop the boom on AEDC because they didn't, you know, it was just as, unless you got something new to share, spend the evening with your family.
Paul Rogers, a nice letter already.
That's why I picked, that's why I picked on him.
Can we do six o'clock that night? Wednesday, the eleventh?
Six o'clock on Wednesday, that's providing, of course, that we have a Quorum.
Yep, well, that'll, that'll work better for you, and work better for me, too.
On the eleventh, then, we can schedule the next time we meet after that, but just, we basically want to meet maybe once a week or every other week up through the first week in November, which would be a little bit last minute, but we need to have our budget summary published on the fourteenth. So we have to have everything pretty much wrapped up then by early in the week of the sixth, say the sixth or the eighth, so then we can pull the rest of that together to get our publishing done. And then we're looking to adopt a special council meeting on November twenty-ninth, what we've done in the past, and that is after Thanksgiving. What we've done the past several years is we have one meeting, a regular November meeting, and we have a special council meeting at the end of the month where we hold the bubble, the budget public hearing if we have any other business, and then in December, the council does not meet. Everybody seemed to be agreeable to that on, on previous discussion, so that's the plan moving forward. So we're going to shoot for Wednesday, October eleventh, finance at six o'clock, and then we'll look at scheduling our next meeting at that meeting.
And Rick will still be gone, though, correct, Rick Davis?
Yeah, he's gone till the eighteenth.
Okay.
So depending upon how much we can get accomplished and decided on the eleventh, will determine really when we need to meet again.
And you said the last budget meeting is, or the last council meeting will be the twenty-ninth of November?
Twenty-ninth of November.
That's the week after Thanksgiving, right?
It's the week after Thanksgiving, and that's when we're looking to hold the public hearing and adopt the budget. And then if we have any other pressing business, we can take care of it then. Like I said, typically, December, it's difficult to get people together, and it's also, we have little to no business pending in December, just for the same reasons, so that would work out well.
Okay, Stour Lakes, seven, Stour Seven Lakes Trail memorandum of agreement.
So we don't actually have a memorandum of agreement physically drawn up yet. It will pend on the...
County meeting that's going on right now.
County meeting tonight that's going right on, but what we do want to do is have the council affirm that we are, as a council, in, in favor of, of proceeding with this. So I, I would make the motion that we adopt a friendly stance towards being the management folks of the Stour Seven Lakes Trail.
I will affirm, I will second the affirmation that we will, we are interested in taking over the Seven Lakes Trail.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, I was going to ask, when you say management, you're talking...
Evidently, and, you know, I...
The, the state needs a government entity, a local government entity to be the management for the trail. The friends of the, of the trail are the ones who are going to do the physical work on it, they're going to manage their own funding, we just are there and mean.
It's not a budgetary item.
Right.
Right, and how much of an agreement would the council need to make with the friends to have things?
I'm sure, they have an attorney on, he's representing him up at the county board meeting tonight. He didn't have anything for us, but, but I'm sure that'll be coming.
Memorandum of understanding would clarify all.
Yep, so that, that'll be coming if everything falls together right.
Hold the vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Wisconsin Public Service Commission recommendations for utility deferred payment agreements.
Yes, our utility billing staff recently attended some training from the Rural Water Association, where the Public Service Commission was one of the presenters there. They made some recommendations for deferred payment agreements for parties to, that, at the time the agreement is made to avoid turnoff, that the customer needs to have one-third of the bill down at the time. What we're running into is people make an agreement, they can't keep the agreement, they want to make another agreement, and then their bill comes out, but of course, they don't want their water turned off, you know, in the meantime. So the PSC is trying to help all municipalities by helping develop and make recommendations for these types of plans and agreements. This isn't really actually something that needs to be an agenda item for the city council, specifically to act on, but we wanted to publicize it, have it as part of our board and our council proceedings, so it's available for informational purposes for the general public. There will also be a flyer going out with our next utility bill notifying them of this change. This is another way to publicize that, and let the, let the public know that this is something that will be coming, so I guess we're, you know, really asking, you know, for your stamp of approval, you know, on that, as well as to publicize it.
Along these same lines, is there any, I know we talked about it at one point, about going to monthly billing?
Yes.
Is there any, any thoughts, views on that? Is that something that's on the radar?
You know, I think that's something that we would need to have a committee examine along with both our, our key water department employees and with Linda Kuhn, who does our utility billing, you know, to give their input on that as well. That is something I believe that would need to go through the PSC as well, where we need to make the change from quarterly billing to monthly billing.
So maybe something for February?
Yeah, that's probably a good time.
One budget's done.
What year?
Might be a little better time, but yeah, that's definitely an option.
Make the motion to approve the new billing requirement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the new billing. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Cigarette and tobacco license applications for Tyrell Uwer.
Yes, this is at the Amory Electronics location, and previously, the owner of the building has held the license for the tobacco there. They've had a change and some restructuring, and I believe their lease agreement, and part of that is that Tyrell Uwer, he now has his own employee ID numbers and qualified by the state, and is now his own LLC, that he would take over holding the tobacco license.
Need a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the tobacco license. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Operator's license, I think there's only one?
Yes, there is only one for an employee of Countryside Co-op. She's taken the class and passed the background check, so I would recommend you approve it.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the operator's license. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation. So I will read this. Whereas Ted Zinn has been a member in good standing in our community for many years, whereas Ted Zinn owned and operated Amory Florist at two seventeen Broadway Street in the city of Amory for many years, and whereas Ted Zinn has rendered service to this community, which deserves special recognition and appreciation, and whereas the city of Amory wishes to promote community beautification in our city parks, streets, and properties, and whereas Ted Zinn has made an outstanding contribution toward increasing the beauty of our community by planting and maintaining a variety of attractive flowers and shrubs in Suline Park and Keller Avenue and other city locations, and whereas Ted Zinn dedicated, dedication to the city of Amory through business and personal contributions has greatly benefited the city of Amory and improved our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Kay Erickson, mayor, on behalf of the city council, citizens, businesses, and employees of the city of Amory, take great pleasure in presenting this proclamation of appreciation and beautification to Ted Zinn, and to urge all citizens to follow... of appreciation and beautification to Ted Zinn and to urge all citizens to follow in his example. It witness thereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city Amory to be affixed this fourth day of October 2017. Congratulations, Ted.
Can I add a little note?
Yes.
Ted's been doing the pots that the women's club puts on the corners, two, I think we have eight of them, that sit on the corners every summer, and he's been taking care of those pots for us as well, so he's contributed even more.
He has a long time. We will be doing something for Ted. We had talked about a plaque of some kind, and I found out from Bones McCarty, he does not want a plaque on anything, so we'll just follow Ted's wishes and we'll do something appropriate for him.
Get him a bouquet of flowers.
We will go into closed session proceeding under Wisconsin 19.85, parenth one, paren C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This pertains to candidates for the city administrator position. The committee may continue in closed session proceeding under Wisconsin 19.85, paren one, paren E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This pertains to an offer to purchase city-owned property. The council will reconvene in open session and may act on matters discussed in closed session and to complete the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Will we go into closed session? Roll call.
Oh, you skipped item 12.
I skipped item 12.
Questions from the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. All right, we'll go back to that. Questions from the public. Okay, now we.
Now proceed.
That's not the point.
Roll a call, Fran.
Yes.
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 We are in closed session, thank you, everyone. All right, we are back in open session.
I'll make a motion that the position of city administrator be offered to Kimberly Moore Sykes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we offer Kimberly Moore Sykes the position of city administrator, working with Gary. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I thought we were going to do a roll call.
He just delayed.
I was just delayed.
He lost his roll call.
We'll start on the other end of the table. Dan Blakem?
Yes.
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Reminshner?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried, we are.
Do we have to move on the, table the property issue?
Yes.
I make a motion to table the property issue on lot one until next month.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to table the property one issue until next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Okay. Any more business to come?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you, Gary.